All right, so no public here to comment on anything else. So what do we have for zoning?
So, as you all may remember, there are a couple of things that sort of are still hanging out there in the residential zoning after they went through the adoption process. One of them was to come back and look at URA again and how, what might make sense in terms of potential remapping or other zoning changes related to urban residential A to sort of balance the distribution of units and sort of the issue about fairness from some neighborhood neighbors and neighborhoods in urban residential B and C districts versus those neighborhoods that are similarly situated but only in a different zoning classification. So this is really just sort of a marked up plan as a starting point to just put out on the table and have a discussion about what might make sense to initiate a process, public outreach and meetings about where to go as for the next step. So we just literally took the map of all the A, B, and C districts. So Urban Residential C is the green around downtown. And then there are these pockets here. This is Barrett Street and King Street here. And this is the Urban Residential C that was just redone last year, Hampshire Heights and Hathaway Farm, I think it's called now.
Right, yeah.
And then across the way is that condominium project that abuts the Barrett Street Marsh that escapes the Pheasants Run.
Pheasant Run.
Yeah. This is River Run that got rezoned to Urban Residential C. And then this is that apartment complex off of Cook Avenue and Hatfield Street, that intersection across, sort of behind the Walmart Plaza.
Yeah.
So those are all the C districts. Purple, or perilegal, or whatever color you want to call it, is Urban Residential B. So this is Route 9 basically, well, actually Route 9 here. And then this is the bike path rail trail here. And this area here is around Cooley Dickinson Hospital. I guess this is Cooley Dickinson. This is the medical, DPW, sorry, just beyond that on Route 9. And this white area is Florence Center, which is General Business District for the most part. There's some industrial there. And then the rose colored is Urban Residential A. And so these spots here, I'll just explain these aberrations. This is sort of at the edge of the water supply protection district. And that boundary is so funky because it's based on watersheds. So these lines are drawn in this way for the most part. So there's this little piece that's not in the watershed area, so it's not in that water supply protection or suburban residential district. And the same can be said for this.
So it's left because that whole area was URA. And you guys rezoned it to watersheds, new district.
Water, yeah, water supply.
Water supply.
Yeah.
Name one of the streets that's...
Well, this is Ryan Road right here.
Okay.
And this is Route 66 here. And Florence Road right here. So it's a little triangle. And then here is Left Arms Road.
Well, is it Winterbury or something like that off of...
Winterbury, oh, over here is Woods Circle, I think.
It's what?
Woods Circle is right here that runs right through this. And then I forget what one of these other side streets is. I think this is...
How much better?
I can't remember the name of this street that comes up here. Here's the Ryan Road School. Here's Cardinal Way, right here. So it's sort of between Cardinal Way and the... Maybe you might be able to help out here.
Where's Ryan Road?
Right here.
So this is Woods Road, the Howard Cove. Second or third street here.
Oh, that's Woods Road. Okay. And then there's Woods Circle, too?
And then some different circles.
Something Circle.
Yeah.
Oh, Brookside. Brookside Circle. Sorry. Yeah, okay, so that's Woods Road. This is Cardinal Way. So...
Oh, okay.
And this piece again, so here's Ryan Road School. This is Sawmill Hills Conservation Area right here. And then this is like Matthew Drive right in...
And that's a revolver club right near Pensacola.
Right here, or down here. Yeah, right here. So this is not even on a street. These are just sort of back parcels, again, sort of sandwiched between the water supply protection district and suburban residential. And then this is permanently protected Farms, Forests, and Rivers, which are only assigned out to city-owned conservation areas. So this big piece is part of the Sawmill Hills Conservation Area. And then up here, this is up of, this is Chesterfield Road here. And...
Reservoir.
Reservoir Road. And then this is Spring Street continuing on into, this is the Country Club and Golf Course and the condominium there. So these are all pretty much built out, single-family house lots. And then Leeds Center is sort of right here. Water Street is where Urban Residential B is. And then this is on the other side, Leeds School is basically right here. And then this is the Melnick Development up there off of Chestnut. And this is Route 9 right here. And then this little URA here is right past the, across the street from Close Office, right?
Close Office, yeah.
Yeah, so this is River Road.
Right.
And that's just a little area there.
And what's all the Y?
The Y is everything else. So where we, so our markup here just indicates options, or things we're throwing out on the table as possible rezoning, remapping, so modifying the zoning.
But you're saying this is what is.
This is what is.
This is what is.
And the markup is what we've thought is sort of the first cut. And we wanted to, you know, throw it out on the table for you guys to think about and, you know, rationalize what our thinking was and to see if you guys were on the same page and if you wanted to move that forward. So, you know, some of it is, we've suggested zoning based on what they abut, what the district abuts. And so that's what a lot of this is. So I don't know if you want to, you know, if we could start at one end of town and move across at that point.
If I were just, as I almost am, a citizen off the street looking at this, I would think this is the most gerrymandered, you know, hodgepodge of things. So you're used to looking at it, but what I'm wondering is, what do you think has guided it so far? Is it density?
That's the problem with URA. So the vision, to extend the vision in the '70s when the zoning came in, was really just, you get less and less dense. You know, and now people are probably closer vision of sort of an urban area and a non-urban area. And so URA doesn't really make a lot of sense because it's not urban and it's not really not urban out there.
So could you say URA is the most dense, like, can you, can you, if you're using the definition...
It's in the definition. We have five zoning districts. URC, URB, URA, Suburban Residential, and Rural Residential. And URA is exactly in the middle. And URA, half of it, for the most part, was wrong because it should be denser, and half was wrong because it was a really sense of environmental areas. You got rid of a huge map of URA when you said, "Let's make this water supply," and got stripped there. There's some places where it's floodplain, you've gotten rid, so individual pieces you've been whittling away for years. So there's some things that make sense to look gerrymandered because that's what the streams went to, that's what, you know, so there's natural gerrymandering.
Yeah.
There are places that are really silly, and some of you who are on the planning board remember one of those controversial things, but there are some areas, like this area of URA, which is up against, it's, you know, a tiny island.
That's Round Hill on Road area, on Crescent Street.
When you say URA, I think Langworthy Road and Mrs., what's her name?
Well, Langworthy Road doesn't really make a lot of sense.
And Fran Volklund and all that stuff.
And that's where one of these are.
Right.
Yeah.
So in some ways, these are the easier arguments. You notice it gets messier and messier as we move out. So at least when we were brainstorming, the place that are totally surrounded by denser areas, it seemed like a more of a compelling logic. Like a place that's really surrounded by very, not very dense, it was compelling. I think we struggled the most with Leeds, frankly. And part of my feeling, starting with this, is we just get totally get rid of URA. And I think in the end, we said, "Well, maybe it makes sense in Leeds." Because Leeds, Leeds is one of the few areas that's really been built out to that density. You know, one of the logics for the big zoning change you guys all supported was, the city was in fact denser than the zoning setting. It was. So we had a lot of non-urban. Leeds, I'm sure, is some of those, but a lot less. For the most part, Leeds, and to a lesser extent, this area was really developed with that kind of zone.
Where is that that you just changed?
So this Fox Farms Road, the area sort of north of downtown Florence.
And it's, but it's bounded basically by the Bridge Road, I think.
This area itself used to be, I think, URA. We got rid of it a few years ago because it's part of Hatfield's water supply. So that made sense to get rid of that one.
It was WSP, but then there was that little finger that went up here. It remained URA because it wasn't in the resource area.
If the URA were taken away, would, just take it away, the consequences for the spaces that now are that would be to make some of them more dense and some of them less dense?
If you're doing what we are saying, yes. So basically, from Florence to downtown, in every single case, we're suggesting making it URB.
More dense.
Right.
So these are the very same people who were hollering about the changes that we were going to make on, in town, are going to end up being...
Those people who heard from where she lived in URB or URC.
They did live in URB, okay.
And they, in fact, were concerned that we weren't treating URA the same way that we were looking at B and C.
We did go, just so you know, because this is territory we were beaten up on before. There was a zone, some of you were on board, I know, Frandy was a cameraman, you were to do some of these things before. And there was a lot of opposition. And we ended up, because it wasn't support, withdrawing these sections. It wasn't going out there, but was trying to do the same thing for these sections. And in fact, made some major changes. So sort of from our standpoint, we got 80% of what we were suggesting and gave up the 20%. But it's been there, and as Carolyn said, there've been some people all wrong who said, who were frustrated in the other direction, saying, "We're willing to live in this greater density because that's what sustainability means, but how can you do that without what we're saying for us?"
And then, and just to remind people, that Urban Residential C is the, allows the most residential density other than the Central Business District or the General Business District above the first floor. But so URC allows any kind of multifamily. And it's always sort of been that way up to the, you know, the size cap, the cap based on your lot size. Urban Residential B allows up to a three-family unless you're doing a side-by-side sort of townhouse configuration where you don't have one unit on top of the other, but you have side-by-side units. And then Urban Residential A has always just been single-family homes. No other units, except for, for the last 10 or 15 years, you can do an accessory apartment within a single-family home anywhere in the city. But that's it. So you have these Urban Residential A areas right next to C and B where you do allow multifamily, but within these pink areas, only single-family. And so you heard in some of those, there, you know, there's particularly, at least one or two residents from Langworthy saying, "You can't change our zoning because our deed says we're not allowed to do more than a single-family home anyway." But that's not really what zoning's there for. And, you know, I guess there's a question about whether the deed is still standing 40 years later after it was created. So at any rate, you know, based on that, this whole conversation that you guys had over the last couple of years, and people saying, "Well, yes, we believe in sustainability, but you got to really look at the bigger picture," this is sort of the time now to come back and revisit Urban Residential A in that context.
So do you want to walk us through and show areas that, what exists now, what you recommend?
Yeah.
And what's A or there?
Why don't we start here?
Yeah.
This is the bar. Yeah. So this is Damon Road. And industrial right here, and this is Route 9 across the bridge, across the river.
That's a strange piece of property.
It's very strange. Actually, I should say, this is 91, the path line, Damon Road, the skinny line. And so sandwiched in between 91 and Damon Road, there's some houses.
Right.
And...
I wonder about those every time I go by there.
It doesn't really make, so if we start on that side of the road, which is, would be the west side, I guess, of Damon Road, you know, it's not really viable residential use, but yet commercially use could also be problematic given turning movements and the volume of traffic that's on Damon Road. So we've, and in fact, we've had calls from a property owner who owns several, there are one or two property owners, potentially a third.
Are you guys recording? I was told to check and make sure. Are you...
We are, yep.
So there are a couple of property owners, I think, that own the whole string. So in that sense, it kind of, it might give a good opportunity to create a zoning, but based on a development agreement where we limit the total number of access points onto Damon Road to one at such time that it makes sense to convert from a residential use to a commercial use. Because I don't think, in any scenario you can imagine that someone's going to want to use that for residential. So I think that's...
Unless it was apartments over something, which they've got on this, the inbound this way.
Right. But even so, you know, by the time you get up, you're right over 91.
Oh, yeah, wow.
So anyway, it's because we've had interest from the property owners, we've sort of put out the idea to them that, you know, if they can get together, so if there are two of them that own the four parcels...
On both sides of the street.
No, just on one side, we're talking about the west side.
The west side.
Enough to use car dealer.
Right, now that's...
And there's a house there.
Commercial already, right?
And there's a house on there. There's at least one house, if not two, on that side of the street as well.
Right. There's one house that's part of that car dealership that's actually partially through the road right away. And then there's three houses that are surrounded on three sides by the conservation area that are on fill. And so someday, frankly, we'd like to buy those houses and take out the fill and restore conservation.
Damon Place or Plaza or something, where is that?
So I think we just changed hands recently?
Yeah.
So that's where in the curve over there.
Yeah. And that's commercial already.
Okay.
So it's just beyond this stretch.
So where's River Run?
The green.
Okay.
So the idea is sort of maybe set that aside, and that could, that probably is more likely to be a commercial zoning, but with a development agreement that stipulates exactly how the site could be built out so that it doesn't create more congestion and traffic problems. The other side, as Wayne mentioned, you know, there's some pieces that make sense to add ultimately to the conservation area. So that's what FFR is, is sort of thinking about that, because that's really on the, really close to the floodplain and it just drops off right down to the river.
So do you foresee that having a frontage road? Is that how you would, I mean, when you're saying you, the property owners might get together and have a single entrance?
I think enough a real frontage road, but just a common driveway that serves the whole property.
Kind of like the successful development of the East Street. All that stuff.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
But this time we do it the right way up front. So does that make sense for that?
Yeah, it's very reasonable.
So then the next piece here, this is to the east of Barrett Street Marsh. It's very, and then this is Carlin Drive right here. So there's this little sliver of Urban Residential A. And across the way, backing up to the backside of the Blue Bonnet Strip along King Street, is a little cul-de-sac with, it's built out as residential, and that's Urban Residential B. So this, again, so we're basically suggesting to match what's across the street instead of Urban Residential A.
But there's two homes there. One, and as it is now, definitely makes sense to be URB. There is one other option for the home on the corner. It's a homest on the corner of Carlin Drive and Barrett Street. And from Barrett Street, it absolutely makes sense to be residential. From Carlin Drive, it sort of makes sense to be commercial. And there's a woman who's interested in that, and we suggested there is a different development agreement, which is, it's actually a thin sliver she has to buy to get to Barrett to Carlin Drive. But we suggested if she frontage off Carlin Drive and then put a 30-foot buffer between her and the residential on Barrett Street, so she felt more like Carlin Drive, that makes sense to go to business. She needs to fair, is her property worth anything if she backed out of 30-foot buffer? There may be nothing left. But that's at least, that might be logical there.
What's the Y around that area? What is it?
Concert evasion, because that's the, this is the Barrett Street Marsh right here. And then this is commercial on this side, because it's King Street here. So it's commercial up to about this point where the marsh is. And then all of this here is Barrett Street continuing on, and then it gets piped under these parcels that front King Street.
That makes sense.
Okay. So then we come up to, this is the bike path. This is Barrett Street. Jackson Street School is right here. So the bike, the bike path comes through here. This is Ridgewood Terrace. And do I have all my... So this part here is sort of that corner of Barrett and Jackson Street that's on the east side. And there's a lot of wet area, actually, that drains to the Barrett Street Marsh. But there's some open fields in here that have just, there's a farmer here, but...
CBIA guy. There's a question.
Politech.
Politech, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's been on the market for a while, for the right price you can buy.
So I mean, we're just suggesting, you know, starting with this corner, Urban Residential B, because both sides are B, the school side and this whole neighborhood by the Jackson Street School is B, it has, you know, closed apartments.
Apartments has to, things in that area.
Right. And then these are apartments here, which is why it's C. This is Hampshire Heights again and Hathaway Farms.
And where do you see this, this side boundary defined as Y?
B as well. So this actually is Child's Park. So this is this whole area from Ridgewood Terrace. This is Prospect, Prospect Street. This is at North Elm Street. Is that right? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's... Is that Cooley Dickinson or Whitewood?
This is Cooley Dickinson.
Yeah, so that's North Elm.
Okay. Okay, yeah. And again, sort of the bike path coming through here, so on both sides, all around is all Urban Residential B, except this is commercial here, general business or neighborhood business, actually, including, this is the funeral home right here in the corner.
And what's in the middle of it?
This? That's Child's Park.
No, under your, oh.
This whole thing. Does that make sense? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I was, I was looking at it from such a slant that URB label in the middle looked like lavender to me.
So, and this is Prospect. This is Woodlawn right here. So there, this whole row of homes here along Woodlawn is Urban Residential A, but everything behind it and all around it is B. And then there's some larger parcels that just have single-family homes up here on the west side of Jackson Street School. They're A.
How did that happen, over time, to have a URB island in that area?
I think it probably goes back to just that they were mostly single-family homes. I mean, I'm guessing, and...
Just, none of us were here in '74, but reverse engineering seems like they were just freezing in time exactly what they had. It wasn't a real plot.
Wasn't that what the zoning was essentially? Just sort of looking at what it was and trying to make it conform with what was already there?
Yeah, except that we had a fact that URC was really down zoned. URB was less, less than, but I think you're right.
Well, and URA, I mean, they all were, really. They still created the lot sizes in '70. They were 20,000 square foot lots.
That's right. We changed those lot sizes over the years, but you're right.
What is the, say, I own a home in that area now, and it changes. It goes from A to B.
What's the consequence? So what that would mean...
What's it mean in my daily life? I have a mortgage, you know, I'm going to live there for 20 years.
Yeah. So right now, you're allowed to have an accessory apartment in one of these single-family homes. I guess what it would mean is, you could potentially have a full two-family instead of an accessory apartment, which means you're not restricted to the size. So an accessory apartment can't be more than a 900 square foot unit. And an owner is required to live in one of the units under that provision of the ordinance if you're an accessory apartment. If you're a two-family, you don't have those restrictions. You can rent both units. They can be any size. One doesn't necessarily have to be smaller or accessory to the other.
And you can be a three-family.
And you could be a three-family if you have the right number, the lot size. Right now, URA, as it was rezoned in August, is 5,000 square feet per unit. Make sure I pointed it out just to make sure. I'm telling you, it didn't contain A, wouldn't you know? So it's one unit per 5,000 square feet. So if you didn't do anything to the code, you need 10,000 square feet for a two-family.
So think about that area and tell me if there are those lots in that area. It's got houses all over it.
Yeah, there, you would be able, there are some larger lots that you wouldn't be able to fit. So if you went to URB, sorry, it's one unit per 2,500, so you need 5,000 square foot lot to do two fam, to do a two-family. And to do a three-family, you'd need 7,500 square feet.
Yeah, because, I mean, aren't some of those lots along Prospect really deep? So that they would have...
From Prospect.
Across from Prospect's Park, yeah.
Across from Child's Park?
Yeah, like along, like between Jackson and the height and the, and the hospital.
Oh, right.
They're some really deep, yeah.
There are a couple of...
And well in Woodlawn, too.
Right. The other thing about that, though, is those houses are also set way back. So I don't know that you could...
Not the ones on Prospect.
Okay.
The ones that run, you know, that runs up to the hospital, whatever. But they're, they go all the way down to the bike path. I mean, they go pretty far down.
Well, no, those actually, if you're fronting Prospect, they're not that deep. But if you're on Jackson Street, there are a couple of really big, larger, deep lots that go west.
Oh, okay.
So there may be some development opportunity that's not there now under a URA scenario. The park obviously is never going to change, so it's not going to, you know, we could probably get rid of that park if we ever get around to that.
At first glance, like, I love the feel of Woodlawn and Child's Park. And it just feels very gentrified, if that's the correct use of that word. And, you know, it's, it's far enough from downtown that I don't, I'd like to hear a case made for density there. But that, that's only a part of it. So I can also see more of Jackson Street, I think, is more, you know, along the back bike path, I think, is more conducive to density. I just, I would hate to lose that, that sort of feel you get around Child's Park.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not so sure because those lots are built out. I don't think there would be a lot of change unless someone were to tear down and build a new modern home on Woodlawn and start over. But, you know, that's probably pretty far and few between. I could see where someone might add a unit to their house. Those are deeper lots, so you could probably do something that's fairly invisible in the fact that it is so walkable. You've got the Y there, you've got the high school, you know, and the open space along the middle river. So I don't know that the character of that streak would necessarily change by adding an apartment unit to the back of one of those houses or...
But they can do that under current zoning?
Not URA, doesn't allow anything other, except for an accessory apartment. You could still do an accessory apartment, but you couldn't do...
The 900 square feet, right.
Right, right.
That has to be incorporated as part of the initial building? The accessory, it could sit in the back?
No, we actually do, we actually do a lot of detached accessory apartments.
Is that true for any area?
Any district.
Detached versus special permit?
Right.
But it's allowed, obviously.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I see, I, I think I understand, and that's kind of where, but also, I don't know, it does seem, I mean, I can see where the idea of having these islands kind of, I don't know, it doesn't...
Well, in one sense, I'm persuaded by the map, but the example that really hits me is we're, we're a community that's getting older.
Yeah.
And for people to have to sell their house in order to make a lifestyle change...
Yeah.
Is, is really what could come out of this. I want people to be able to, you know, take the existing structure, and I'm, we did this through the previous zoning. The cost of tearing these down to rebuild one, to get a more dense unit, is not really what's gonna happen.
Right.
You're gonna, you're gonna, I mean, they can, but the cost doesn't...
I mean, think about it as an example, I mean, in terms of sort of beautiful, big homes, your neighborhood off South Street, Elm Street, Round Hill, and those have been URB for years, and it's not that we've seen those places suddenly being bastardized.
No, what you are seeing is more people living in the same structure.
Right, exactly. Or actually, fewer people than was twenty years ago, but just two units. Because there's two couples on each side instead of one family.
We don't let any of them have kids.
But, you know, an example of this sort of, the corner of, right now, it's a single-family home, but the house on the corner of Woodlawn and Prospect, and Elm, was on the market several years ago, for a long time. And it's a, it's a big house, I don't remember what script it was.
It's a stucco, right?
Yeah. And for a while, there was a nonprofit that was looking at it, because nobody could figure out how to occupy this huge house. And there are other homes on Woodlawn that are like that. And so I think, you know, had there been an option, and then there are a couple more around the corner, right there, that are still on Elm, that are in, you know, there are actually a couple of big mansions on that end of Elm that are Urban Residential A. And they're just, they're enormous structures. So I think that those won't change, but maybe the flexibility to use them could, might go into duplexes.
Right. So really, we should use the same reasoning for the, the major zoning changes when we're looking at, at this map. And I'm just curious why this was left alone when the, the big push for, for the zoning changes was...
It's really sort of, there's a, there's a, trying to find the bounds between doing everything so we tie them all together, and getting so overwhelmed that nobody could understand it.
Getting something done, right, okay.
But, I mean, I think ultimately, the map should reflect, they should converge at some point to, to almost mirror each other. And it seems, in a general sense, you'd have URC close to downtown, URB in the middle, and you trend to URA in Leeds. Leeds is kind of in the middle, it feels that way anyway, you know, so switching that to URB, you know, to me, it makes sense, maybe URA out in Leeds, but in this area, though I love the feel of Woodlawn and the look and so forth, it seems to me, you, you if you're gonna go to this effort, you change Child's Park to, what is it, FFR? And, and, and everything else to URB, because that's what's all around it on every side. And that's where you'd want more, not crazy, but more density, the closer you are to downtown.
Maybe another thing that's compelling...
Go around Child's Park. Okay, so the A is on, goes all the way around it, including a cross from the, well, no, the high school is...
The high school is B.
And the one road that goes through there is at the edge.
Right, Woodlawn goes right along the edge here.
Route nine.
And this is Route nine, sorry.
Right, so it's right along the edge.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And this is Prospect here.
And where's Massasoit?
Oh, right here. And here's Franklin.
Which is another sort of compelling thing, when you think about Franklin and Massasoit, they, they look just like the ones further out, I mean, there's no real difference, and they're in different zones.
Yeah.
One of the compelling things for me for this, and the zoning change you guys just did, is, you know, for twenty years, we've been reducing lot size in these urban core areas, and allowing more and more flexibility, and every census we look at, the population continues to drop. So, family size is dr, is dropping fast, and, you know, so it's not that anything is gonna create more people in these areas, it might create more units, so maybe the drop in population is slower.
Well, and the population projections for the city for the next fifteen years certainly is down, not up.
Randy, what do you think?
Well, another thing you have to consider on, on previous zoning attempts is who, which city councilor lived in which zoning area.
Yeah, I wondered when I first saw this, if we can back it...
And it's something to worry about in the future too, because certainly any attempts to change URA was in serious trouble, previous attempts.
But going back to Carlin's question, but that would only happen if in fact people tore down and they re, I mean, if it was just subdividing the current structures...
Right, or adding a piece in the back.
Obviously, there'd be more cars, but I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change the feel of it as much as if, you know, they tore down and, you know, then put...
In fact, you could say this could be an effort to preserve the housing.
Right. Well, that's what we talked about during the, you know, that initial zoning, you know, give people some opportunity to have income back by, you know, if they're spending to preserve the character of the historic structure, that costs a lot of money.
Well, and to recap, why you didn't do it before, we changed the rules for the zoning areas, but it's a really big deal to also change the map of the zone at the same time.
Right.
So I think it would have felt like we were, I think it would have felt like we were up to too much, because people couldn't quite figure out what it meant to their each plot.
Right.
So I, I, I understand separating this.
And in layman's terms, you know, someone said, well, what are you doing? I mean, could we make the case that we're giving home, current homeowners, a chance to have more flexibility for lifestyle, aging in place, you know, all those things, by, by making this change?
Well, and for some particular properties, like the very large mansion you described...
Right, yeah, especially those, yeah.
That you actually breathe new life into them.
Right.
In, in a sale.
Yeah, I mean, everybody wants their own property rezoned, and nobody wants their neighbor's property rezoned.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think you made a good case to change it.
So, I mean, the same holds really, this is, this is Ward Avenue right here, so they have really long, deep lots going to the river. This is, is it Federal or Vernon?
Federal.
This is Federal here. This is Vernon, I guess, here. And then Washington comes down here, so there's access to the river here. This is...
Yeah, Maynard and Forbes don't reach all the way to Ward Avenue.
Yeah. So there's this whole area, now, we just, the reason why it has a weighty line here is this is the floodplain boundary. So all the houses are at the top of the hill, but their lots actually go really down.
Oh, really?
It's like forty feet down. It's a great big garden.
That's what I'm saying down there, is big gardens.
So, and they're very narrow, you know, you've been down there, the houses are close together, but it's the same thing, you know, you've got these old, larger, older homes.
When you're figuring out what can go on in a lot, and you need five thousand square feet to do a two-family, and, but part of my lot is in floodplain, what happens?
It still counts as your lot.
Okay.
Yeah, area. Unless it's underwater, I don't know.
It's not my land anymore, is it, if it's in the Mill River?
In effect, the watershed is like a six zone.
I mean, in the feel of the...
It's a width though.
A six, zone number six. I mean, it's another, in effect, it's another...
Yeah, you know, what is five, five residential districts? Then there's, there's a word like Y, there's a word like back.
I mean, I thought it was like an overlay, because it's not...
You know, all the kids are changing stuff down there.
I know you remember.
I'd only seen it from the...
I know, I remember changing it.
Yeah, but I didn't realize that the lots are always up.
I don't remember any.
So this wraps around, this is Dryett's Green here, so there's west, south, same thing, just sort of wraps all the way around to, I guess, Dryett's Green is sort of the point where it converts to Urban Residential B. And then this is Kensington, right? Kensington is half B and half C.
C being Smith College.
C being Smith College. So that's what that is, and then over here, we talked about, this is Langworthy, that little step street that backs up to the backside of the Clark, former Clark campus. So you can only access it coming up of Crescent Street, and it's a little dead-end street. And then if you go further up Crescent, this is Bancroft. So all of Bancroft and the lots fronting it, going up and around Round Hill on the backside of the Clark campus are A. So, and then you can see it's clearly sandwiched between C and, and B there, so...
What's the white? That little reserve, that, at the bottom.
Mary Brown's, yeah, conservation area, so it's a little...
Where's that?
It's almost landlocked.
Below Crescent and Prospect back in there, you, there's a...
You know that little Franklin Street that comes, or, no, wait, Glendale Avenue or something? The dead ends off of Prospect, down by Summer Street, somewhere in that, or Winter Street, I guess. Right across there, that dead end into the, into that.
Two bears, like.
Right.
I mean, yeah, to me, those, the little ones seem, you know, it just seems to make sense. And the larger one is a little bit, but, I mean, the little ones seem, but, you know, the ones in your neighborhood, so you might have a different view.
This cross made the Barrett Street around behind Clark School again.
Bancroft?
Uh-huh, Bancroft.
Okay, so this starts at Franklin, it's a street that connects Franklin and crosses Crescent, and then starts to go up the hill, it's pretty steep there. And if you look through the trees, you can see the backside of Clark Campus, and you're coming up around the hill and it intersects with, is that Bancroft or Hillside? That's Bancroft. So your then part where it connects with Round Hill is sort of halfway down Round Hill going towards Prospect. And...
Now, there's some empty lots in there.
No.
That in the blue, that, in the blue, there are some?
No. Oh, there are some lots that go, you're right, there's a couple lots that go from Bancroft to Hillside, right? They have double frontage.
So it's not empty lot per se, but it could be divided up.
Well, okay. Yes, we got a house.
If you're on Hillside, it looks like there's an empty space on Hillside, but in fact, it's the backyard of the uphill side.
And with the zoning change, making the lot smaller, that's more true now than it was before.
So those could potentially, they'll be...
Those could be some development.
Right.
That's what I thought.
So...
And so with the change, it could be developed as multifamily?
Well, the uphill side that's Urban Residential A, so the downhill side, which is already been, is zoned B, and has the smaller lot size, potentially could go now as a, as a building lot. But with two, potentially two families, but not the uphill side. And the uphill side is already built out, so you could potentially add a unit, but it also depends on those setbacks, so some of those houses don't meet their setbacks, so it may not, it may be impossible in any way.
And obviously, I want to oversee some places, you know, we do have some fires every year, and there's a few places that are in bad shape and get torn down, so there will be some tear downs.
Okay, should we keep moving?
Yeah.
Okay. So this block is north of Florence Center, which is right here. This is Chestnut.
This is Bridge Road?
Yes, this is Bridge Road. This is Chestnut, is that correct?
So this is like Strawberry Hill?
Yeah, this is the Vernon Street, right? That's why it's white, right, at the bar, at the landfill?
Yeah, Garfield, yes.
Garfield, right, and Verona, right.
Not Vernon.
Yeah, I was thinking of Verona.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah. So this is Chestnut. This crossroads, oh my God, this is something I don't know. Strawberry.
That's strawberry.
Strawberry.
No, straw is right here.
Oh, okay.
And Route nine is where?
Right here through the smart section.
That's right.
And this is the Bike Path.
This is Bridge Road.
And that's Bridge Road.
So is that like Fitzgerald and Francis Road?
Yeah, yeah. And so this, there's, okay, I should know this, oh, no, over here. So this edge, this is Hillcrest, this is something, 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 and Chestnut. So whoever...
That Fox Farms?
Maybe it's Fox Farms.
It is, yeah.
So the, so obviously, it's surrounded by B, so it might logically look like B. The interesting thing is that this, this whole area that's B now, we actually have an appeal coming forward, because there's, there are these funky lots in here on the B side that have access to a street that goes through here that's Kimball. But because there's not enough lot size to enfrontage in B, this person, long time ago, bought a lot in Hillcrest, and that made their lot whole essentially for compliance. Now they're trying to sell off, or they have sold off the Hillcrest, want to try and develop it, but we're saying because it's A zoning, and you can't subdivide the parcel off, so I, I'm just bringing this up because if the zoning were to change to URB, it would create a little bit more flexibility in this one instance, but also, it sort of represents the problem of having sort of split districts within a neighborhood.
I remember talking about this very neighborhood in the zoning discussions, about how different pockets of the city just didn't make any sense, and this was one of them. Where there's no difference between, you know, this street and the adjoining street, or the one next to it after that, and yet they're different, you know, one's A, one's B, for no reason that anybody was aware of.
And then the triangle that comes, this one?
Yeah. So this is, yeah, these are all pretty tight, dense, you know, dense neighborhood here, built in the, what, sixties?
Yeah, fifty's there.
So, yeah, it doesn't really match the A sort of concept. Anyway, I think those are pretty much built out, but, you know, I guess it...
What is this area here?
This is, Rick Drive is here.
What's the zone here, is that, or is that...
That's where the car is.
And that little triangle's not?
Right, because the line of the drain, the drainage line runs that way, this is all Fitzgerald Lake Conservation Area, this is Fitzgerald Fence Property, but here is Fitzgerald Lake. So the, the, the area of, um, direction of flow and watershed goes the other way, this just happens to be the dividing line. And the same with this, that's why this line comes across here.
Funny looking line.
And that's where the mill's at.
Yeah, right here, and then this is the neighborhood right next to, and this is Spring Grove Cemetery. So, yeah, we're suggesting same, you know, B here. Now, this is, yeah, so Bridge Road continues here, and then this is the VA right here. And this is the park. So we would propose that to be FFR, not residential, obviously.
And the little, cute little bumps going...
Floodplain. So this is the mapped floodplain here, and then it was just, so it had previously been an overlay, and it had been...
Over URA.
Over URA. So when we took the floodplain out of there, these little bump outs, it would, yeah.
And some of the things I've got to totally symbolic, that land is landlocked, you couldn't get to it, it's never could be developed, but we might as well clean this up.
Now, you've got the, the development there next to the middle school, Sparrow Hill.
Yeah.
Right there, right?
Right. And that's permitted, built, you know...
But it's not built out, I mean, I thought there were still more...
There are, but, I mean, I suppose you could come back and amend the permit, but then you've got all these condo owners that might not allow that to happen.
There's ten to twelve more of them.
Yeah, I didn't know what impact it would have, I mean, making this change, given that theoretically, it's not complete.
Well, actually, the other piece of it, though, is it did come in as a cluster development, and there are some significant topographic constraints that limited the number of units they could do anyway. So I'm not really sure that could ever have more than what's there, even if all the homeowners now would allow it. There's just the topography problem.
Right, yeah. Then they got the VA behind them.
Right. So the other interesting thing about this is we had this overlay all along this north side of Bridge Road, which includes these areas that we're talking about, where you could increase your density under a cluster provision anyway to a URB density, if you provided affordable housing units. So it's not, I mean, it, in some respects, that provision to get more dense was on the books if you did it through sort of a master plan development process, if you, you know, to just add more rationale to that side of the street. So, are we good there? Okay.
You're on a roll.
So, let's see, which part first?
So, so that's to turn those all into...
URB.
B. URB. None of them into...
Except for this would be FFR, which is Look Park.
Okay, and, and no area in there would, would be taken out and put into the suburban?
That's what I was about to get at.
Okay.
So then, I just want to say, this has an arrow to FFR, just may as well take on this. This is the golf course. So we don't have a, we need to make text changes to the current Farms, Forests and Rivers because it currently just covers conservation land. So we need to modify the text language to say currently protected land, but still allowing some kind of recreational activity. So like golf courses, or like Look Park that has these other functions associated with it. But we know it's not going to be built out as a residential use. It's really there as a recreational conservation.
If someone was a recreation now, but is thinking more like Recreation Department, as opposed to...
Yeah, commercial recreation.
Yeah, well, like the Garden House. We're not trying to stop the Garden House.
Or Golf Promotions.
But is the golf course, could the golf course ever be changed to residential?
No. So golf course was a planned unit development, sort of like a cluster is today.
So that golf course is, not all golf courses would be, but that golf course is...
Just because of that, right. So it was earlier, today, we require a conservation restriction, people do that. So that doesn't exist there, but just the permit that allowed that still applies. If council changed all the zoning, then it could be developed, but otherwise.
So then the other piece of that is the actual condominium complex. It's, was built as part of the golf course.
Is it built out?
Fairway Village, right? Yes, that's completely built out. So rezone that to URB because it's a condominium project, it's high density. But zone the golf course itself, that piece of it as a lot.
I don't know that I really need to understand, but I don't know what you just said about the golf course. I missed.
So there was a full golf course, eighteen hole golf course. They carved out Fairway Village. It was in essence a cluster, different term at the time. And they, in essence, they carved out Fairway Village and left enough land for, I think it's a nine hole golf course. Yeah, I'm not sure about that. So because the permit basically said, you develop half at greater density, you have to preserve the golf course.
Okay, thank you.
So the permit condition says it protected no deeds or...
So no matter, transacting that course cannot happen for any other purpose?
Unless council changed all this up. The golf course does allow, so they're going to deal with the zoning. The golf course does allow that country club where the pool is, that's a permitted use. We need to make sure we're not trying to stop that use.
So then moving across the river, in the, up Chesterfield Road. Sort of, you imagine going up Chesterfield Road, there's some farm houses left. So there's also a little pocket, a little neighborhood there. And then south of that are sort of all these flag lots that are really low density. So this is where we were suggesting go to suburban residential. Again, this is water supply collection, right? The white?
Oh, to the...
Oh, down here is water supply. This is SR now, so it would just match that. And...
Sorry, what's SR?
Suburban residential.
So that doesn't allow any multifamily. It's all single family, lower density.
Unless it's a cluster.
Right, a 30,000 square foot lot, 125 feet of frontage. So I'll take care of these little pockets here. This, I had mentioned, oh, I was going to, it is Stallman Hills Conservation Area. This we're looking, this is a mistake, or we're trying to acquire that?
We just acquired a couple years ago.
We just acquired that, so that needs to be rezoned. And then the rest of these pieces are landlocked, you know, just left over from the surrounding zone. So go to SR. And the same for this, we talked a little bit about that. But given that the abutting zoning is for...
And that fits the comprehensive plan, which basically says that's the area where it's determined that conservation development. Not if a housing, we're not looking for density out there.
Most of this is already built out, except there's this pocket in here that is partially, well, there's a ton of wet ones and there are thermal pools. So there are constraints anyway relative to development. So you could argue, well, you're sort of down to from our residential A to SR. But in fact, anything that happens in here is going to be part of a cluster development. So that could still happen under SR. And then Leeds. So bike path coming up here. And this could be, so we're suggesting no changes.
Why, you're just bearing out on that one?
Well, sort of. I mean, I'd love to get rid of it. You already told me, in this area personally, I wouldn't have any problem with URB development. But if part of the story of URC is this really short walking distance to downtown, and URB, your reasonable walking distance from some commercial area. Leeds doesn't really have much of a commercial center, so it's a...
Real estate mill.
Yeah.
You know, it's not Florence, and it's not downtown.
It's about three or four commercial buildings down.
There's been a store, Leeds Center, way back in Route 9, there's three or four commercial buildings.
And the same goes for that other little pocket up on River Road.
But then you've got blue pockets up there too.
So that's where sort of the old mill housing development along Water Street. So they're small, they were zoned that way because there were smaller lots.
Though going back to the other in there, B, that you want to be URA, just because I walk there every day. I mean, there are lots of homes that would be, you know, suitable for subdividing, you know, creating. I mean, they generally have pretty big lots. But not changing it prevent them, or would it just make it more difficult?
Some of the bigger lots still could be divided, but yes, would limit the number that could be. I wouldn't have any problem, don't get me wrong, I would have no problem with being URB. There's not a lot of pre-existing non-conformities, there's not a lot of lots that are already at the URB density. There's not a lot of commercial development, which means we're really pushing it being there. So it's just not as compelling, not bad.
But the changes that we just made...
A lesser.
Did allow, you know, it's going from 75 feet of frontage to 50 feet of frontage, and from 12,000 square feet to 5,000, could allow some of that.
Okay. And you know what comes home to me somewhat, and I don't want to sound classist at this, but in the areas which are really at URB density, to me, the people who don't want to change are just not preserving their little area. And that, to me, isn't the right thing. In that area, if Leeds Civic wanted to zone to URB, I'd support it in a second. But I'm just, I'm not sure imposing it is sort of changing, I guess I don't feel comfortable with that whereas...
Well, there you go.
No changes?
That was one night, it took the other stuff three years, and this is one night.
They still take three years to go through the process.
This is just a start.
I was going to say, you haven't pitched it yet, in my mind, this is the choir. I, I think how it's presented will be really, you know, how well it's presented will be kind of the catch on it. Because it, it does fit a lot of things. It fits the sustainability plan, it makes sense of the zoning changes that we made. It's not as scary because of the population trends. And I mean, there are a lot of reasons why, you know, it ought to go through.
Okay. Well, you know, make sure that the folks that were concerned that we weren't addressing A along the drive.
Right. I mean, ultimately, it's just, it seems to make sense. And so that's reasonable and thought out, and it makes sense. And so I would think it'd be well received.
Why do I talk about FFR now? Because it's a lot of maps still, correction. So this is much more house key. So these changes would take a long time, go through the process. And Karen was talking about some areas we want to change to FFR, but only once we change the text. This is just, so we, just to have a quick history of FFR. FFR is created when Governor Weld became governor, and he was going to balance the state budget by selling the state hospital. And so the way we got defensive is, how'd that work out? We rezoned the old buildings to be planned village development. We rezoned all the areas who wanted to protect as open studies to be Farms, Forests and Rivers. Basically, it's the most restrictive zone you could think of. And then cooler heads prevailed and legislature protected all the remaining areas. And so we had this thing on the books for a long time. Then two years ago, we rezoned all the conservation areas in town, Farms, Forests, Rivers, more for truth than advertising. But thinking of something, we actually rezoned private properties in places we don't want development, Farms, Forests, Rivers, but we didn't do that yet. And at the time, we started saying, we'll come back and we'd buy more land. So all this is, is the green up here are the conservation areas that are already zoned to FFR. And the yellow is the conservation land we've purchased in the last three years. So it's basically, we would just add that, so all matches. You see a few funny holes in that? And that's because floodplain zoning, special conservancy, is even stricter. So where there's a floodplain that goes through a conservation land, that remains flood, zoned floodplain.
So for instance, you're talking about there.
Exactly. So Fitzgerald Lake is actually flooded. And likewise, we own some conservation land in Meadows. That doesn't show up because that's zoned, special conservancy, so.
So but that's, so John asked, you know, why wasn't the Smith Forest on there? And I was explaining that we, it's not all the parkland and/or school lots or things of that sort are on here because they're not, they don't have the same protection. And that's a working forest, basically, right? So we just have it in there.
Right. So there's two reasons it's not there. So one is that what Karen was just saying, it's not ours to do, and Smithville owns it, and, yeah, they can sell it for homes. But the other is, there is sort of a game we want to play at some point. The state at various points, this doesn't exist right now, but at various points on and off over the years, they'd have programs to fund municipal unprotected land to protect the land. Where they will pay the jerkens to what the land is worth for development, and the land is worth for conservation. And I don't want to give that up. So if we rezoned Farms, Forests, Rivers, then there's no development value left, and Smithville couldn't get half a million dollars. The water supply protection lands by the Leeds reservoirs are not on here for exactly the same reason. We want to protect that, but we want to give a half a million dollars of state money first, and then we protect it.
So would you add to these yellow areas that you want to change to green? Would you add Look Park and Charles Park?
Yes, but it's a longer conversation. I think we might do this as low hanging fruit, because this doesn't require a text change. You know, Con's coming, he said earlier, he voted to endorse this as well. I wouldn't want to do Look Park until we fixed the zoning text to make sure Garden House is allowed. And we had the conversation with them about, same goes for Charles.
Ready?
Yeah.
What else?
Okay.
Do you need us to do anything more than not?
Do you want to vote? We'll come back to your public hearing, will you vote to sponsor it?
Yeah, I'm going to sponsor the, the changes to zoning then. For Farms, Forests and Rivers.
Second, John, all favor?
Okay, so, let's see.
I hesitate to ask, but do we need to do the same for that?
No, because we're still, this is a work in progress. Okay, so, number two. Which one should we do first? Number two, changes to site plan in A, B and C for additional units on a parcel versus accessory apartments. What does that mean? I guess, so after the zoning change, we sort of, we've had a bunch of inquiries about what people might want to do on their lot. So if they have extra land, they might want to add another detached structure. So...
Really? Already?
Yeah.
By these detached structures, living quarters, garages?
Well, they would either be new or conversion garages. So the requirement is, so what, as part of that whole package, we deleted a section in the zoning that said, that prohibited more than one principal residential structure on a parcel so that people could get creative and put smaller units in the back of their lots. And maybe then create compatible design with the neighborhood if there are lots of detached, you know, carriage houses or garages. So, and, and we didn't, so there was that one piece.
We did not prohibit that.
Right, we eliminated the prohibition. So there had been something on the books up to that point that said, you can't have more than one principal structure that has a single, two or three family unit on it. So you couldn't have two, two family homes on one lot. Or a single unit in one house, in one structure, and then another single unit in another structure but on the same parcel. That wasn't allowed until the zoning change. So we've been having these inquiries, and the way they've been interpreted is that if you have a two family, for example, on an existing lot, and you wanted to add another structure. So you might have a lot here, and you have a two family here, and your driveway's here. And then you think, well, I've got enough land area, and I've got enough frontage. I'd really like to do a single unit here, but in a detached structure. And I meet all the setbacks from the rear and the side, it's no problem. From our ordinance, the definition of a single family house is a single unit in a self-contained structure. So this came up because we thought, well, there might be people that, that want to come in and add this. And, and right now, it's, it wouldn't, if it's under 2,000 square feet, it wouldn't trigger any site plan review by the plan anymore. It would just be a new structure in and of itself. But on the other hand, we still have on the books this detached accessory apartment that's allowed anywhere in the city. It can't be more than 900 square feet. It also requires special permit by zoning board of appeals. So we sort of have two scenarios where this is a single family, and then over here, you might have a smaller lot that doesn't allow you to do another, a whole nother unit, but you could do this as an accessory apartment. This is a DVA special permit, this is nothing. So the idea is to come to you guys and say, is that okay not to have site plan review over the addition of one house that might be less than 2,000 square feet? Because it wouldn't create more than six parking spaces, which is another trigger for site plan review. And is it okay to have these two, two seemingly conflicting permit reviews for these two different situations?
And often, I'd probably switch where I was, but one of the reasons I probably now think it should be site plan approval is when there's a deep lot and there are homes along the road in an ice line, neighbors don't usually object. When there's suddenly a house in someone's backyard, you know, there's a line of backyards or open space, and suddenly someone's there. I'm not saying it's not a good idea to have there, but it should be subject to a greater review.
And so I guess, thinking about that, you know, you might have a detached garage that's 15 or 20 feet at the peak. But if our minimum, a maximum height for a principal structure is 35 feet, your rear structure could be 35 feet instead of sort of more of a diminutive garage kind of height.
So do you need an occupancy permit for an accessory apartment?
Yes.
And do you, what is, does that mean that you have to have in the way of services in that unit? Do you have to have plumbing?
Yeah, they're going to, it's a living space. And the way we define, the way we've sort of looked at accessory apartments is that if there's a second kitchen, that sort of would be the trigger that that's really functioning as a second unit. I mean, there are other things too, but when you really start to, if people really start trying to play the game and say, well, this isn't really a separate unit, it does, in some cases, it might boil down to whether or not there's a second kitchen. If that's what you're, if that's where you're going.
I'm just trying to think of the use of auxiliary buildings that may get a little more creative than I've got a rentable second unit in my, as an accessory apartment. I'm just...
We've certainly allowed, you know, an artist studio and that kind of space.
With plumbing, but that we don't call that a residential unit. So you might have a bath and a sink, you know, floor and a sink, but that's not an apartment.
But would you allow a structure that was, for instance, a practice unit for somebody who was in a band? But they had the house in the front, but there's a unit, it's not a garage.
Yeah, we call that a workshop.
Yeah.
Garage, storage, yeah. If that person lived in the front unit, but not as a separate rental. So if I live here, I can't rent this as my studio space in a residential district, unless it's a mixed-use residential district. And that's more of a retail kind of function.
So are we, are we working against what we just changed to allow that zoning where it did not allow it, now it does? But now we're saying, well, we should see that as a site plan?
But site plan, you're not saying no. I think that's the case. The zoning says now that unit is allowed, but we do want to look at the details of the unit.
I guess the issue is, you know, we do, we automatically, we've said, site plan for anything that's over 2,000 square feet, automatically, site plan. So if this by itself was 2,000 square feet, it would definitely get a site plan right now. But if someone said, you know, I really want to avoid that site plan. I'm going to build a 35-foot tall, single-family house that's 1,999 square feet. They could do that now because it's less than 2,000. You're not creating more than, you also have six parking spaces. If you're creating more than six parking spaces, that also triggers site plan review. Which again, is just the technical. You guys wanted to say, well, let's look at the design aspects, make sure it fits into the character of the neighborhood, the driveway, parking arrangement, buffers, and all of that come into the review under the site plan. And so, I mean, I guess, so there's that piece of it. If you were doing, you know, if you were doing a two or a three family, that definitely triggered site plan. Or if you're doing townhouses, that's a site plan automatically. So, it almost as though it's this loophole. And then the other scenario is if I create three of these detached, single-family homes that are, you know, well, I guess with three if I'm doing a neighborhood.
They're not going to be detached, they're going to be...
Well, but then all of these are considered single families, so they wouldn't in and of themselves trigger. So if I did this one this year, then I came back next year and did another one, and then the year after, I did a third one. They're all single families, they're all less than 2,000 square feet, but then in total, you'd want to see that site. You'd want to see how it functions, you want to see how the parking is arranged. But someone could piece together a project that's over time adding up to something that really should have had site plan.
Site plan is a special permit, is that more of a special permit type discussion? Because it seems like, excuse me, if, if they build a 35-foot, 1,999-square-foot unit, but it meets all the setbacks and it comes in front of site plan, site plan, we're very limited. If somebody comes in front of us and we meet all the technical requirements, we're very limited in our capacity to reject something in the site plan.
Except in your design standards, you have the massing and compatibility with the neighborhood criteria that wasn't there, that hasn't been there up until it's really changed. So if this feels like a sore thumb sticking out in the backyards and sort of intruding on, on the neighborhood in terms of privacy and massing in the rear, I think you have that ability to say, no, you've got to, you've got to bring it down, you've got to reorient your building or something, you've got to do something else.
So the massing, the diagrams that were, have been added now that show the massing, we now have that argument where we didn't have that six months ago?
Right, right.
I think...
Yep.
She's...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You were talking about what sounded like something that went like this. If I tried to put all this stuff down at one time, yeah, I'd get reviewed. If I tried to put it down one time after one time, I wouldn't get reviewed at all.
Right. That's what I'm saying is, at least there's a loophole that I don't think anybody thought about. It came up within a, one of these conversations and sort of, well, what-if scenario when the building commissioner and I were sitting down talking about some of these questions that we've been fielding. And his concerns are reading the ordinance, he says, wait a second, they could come in today and do this one, then as soon as they're done with that permit, they'll pull another building permit and do this, because we know that overall they want to add seven townhouse units or seven...
They've got to have certain coverage. I mean, there's got to be, I mean, there are some, still some constraints on doing that.
There are still some constraints, but the idea is if you came in and proposed three units all at once, that would of course trigger site plan. But if you parsed it out, it wouldn't. And then, so it gets back to that definition of what's a single family. And so I guess the question is, do you all feel that it makes sense to add more specificity to what triggers site plan? So if you had an existing structure and you're adding another unit, does that automatically trigger site plan?
Well, I think...
Or is there a three-year window, you know? If, within a three-year timeframe, you add, we have this provision in another part of the zoning where we look at the project, actually this is in the stormwater ordinance, if you're, if a site is considered under, you know, one development, if the project is within a three-year timeline. So even if you do one part of your phase and then two years later do you another thing, we still look at, it's the big piece, so you have to commit.
Well, we should look at it even if it's 20, 20 years later, right? But I think we should try and eliminate that loophole and also the inconsistency between the way the accessory detached apartment is permitted, maybe by changing the square footage, I don't know.
Or potentially do that by site plan. I don't know if that's what you were thinking.
Yes, I think, I mean, the second principal structure requiring site plan. It's still allowed.
That's a trigger, right.
I think that'd be the simplest...
Yeah, I agree. And I think now that we have that massing kind of argument, which is almost borderline special permit discussion, does this fit with everything that's around it? But...
Can you explain that?
The, when we just, do you have one of those diagrams from...
So these are the design standards in the, I apologize, my printer's leaking. So we have sort of, oh, this is garage, sorry. It's sort of the bulk and the scale of the structure relative to its surroundings.
But it used to be with site plan, if it met the setbacks and we were given the footprint of the building and it met all the technical requirements, we had very little say in what it actually looked like. With the new zoning where the, where the lot size changed and some setbacks changed, along with that came this, the massing where essentially it says, it's kind of sort of got to look like everything else around it, and if it doesn't, we get to look at it.
I feel like it gave us some leverage when the neighbors all came in and said, it's not right. Then you could say, you know, maybe they're right.
Does the 2,000-square-foot thing seem like a lot? I mean, there's 1,200-square-foot houses, does that mean they could put a 1,999-square-foot building that would dwarf it, the existing structure?
Right now, 2,000 is a trigger, but it, what, I guess the last thing that was thrown out was if we say any second principal structure on a lot, no matter the size.
Because remember, it's 2,000, except generally, single-family homes are exempt. So even a building 10,000-square-foot, single-family home, add any site plan anyway, but the catch would be a second principal structure, then we get to look at the single-family home.
Okay, what's the definition of principal structure? I mean, how can you have more than one principal structure?
One's large.
Principal means it's the main one.
Right, but, I don't have my ordinance here, but the way it's worded in the ordinance is you could have, you know, principal meaning, principal use of the residential use as opposed to an accessory to that residential component, like garages and things, or accessory to your main function on the site is residential.
So it doesn't mean a principal in relation to the lot, it means principal in relation to the function of living there.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay, clarify a bit of that.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think 2,000's a large building.
So, we good with that, that just a secondary structure is an automatic site plan trigger?
A secondary principal structure.
A second principal structure.
Yes.
So if I wanted to build a really nice playhouse in my backyard but not live in it?
That's an accessory structure. Right. Do you really do that?
Yeah, but what I'm, what actually I'm thinking about are, are those becoming sort of surrogate structure? You know, in other words, yeah, that's exactly what I had, it's a studio, but what if I really did put a family member there and they lived there and they just came into my house to use the bathroom and, you know, or, you know, put a composting toilet out there? It's this extra structure and then, you know, we think we know what people are going to do and they don't.
Right.
So, I was just exploring that idea.
Can I, first, one, can I come over to your house and play? Number two is what happened to the chicken coop?
It's the, it's the other accessory structure.
So, about the accessory, detached accessory apartments, now we still have in some of the zoning districts, nothing more than a single family but for this detached accessory apartment. So, I guess the question would be, do we leave it still a zoning board special permit in those districts? I guess we could do that in the suburban residential and the rural residential and urban residential A, it's still zoning board special permit for this detached, no more than 900 square feet. But then site plan in the other districts, B and C, where we allow these second, you know, then it's not really so much an accessory apartment unless you don't meet the lot size requirement, which I think you could, I just want to make sure that makes sense to people and that you understand the distinction.
Can I restate it because I don't?
Okay.
In suburban residential where you have enough land that you could build an, a building, a non-residential building, then you don't have to come to us at all, you can just do that.
If you're building a single-family house?
No. I'm building a shed.
Oh, if you're building a shed, well, this is another complication, we have no more than 1,000 square feet of detached accessory structure allowed.
In?
In the SRR, unless it's for agriculture.
So you have a bigger chicken coop?
Okay, well, I can't even restate it, you're going to have to say it to me again. I'm sorry to be confused.
No, that's okay. So, what I'm suggesting is that right now, in the other districts where multifamily units or multiple units are not allowed, detached accessory apartments are allowed only with a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. If you have them attached in, as part of the house, connected to the house, that's by right, you don't need a zoning board of appeals. That's how it is now. So, by, but then, but let's go to B and C districts where we allow multifamily, two-unit, three-unit, what have you. We're saying detached secondary principal structures, there's no limit, 900 square feet, so we're not calling it an accessory apartment, but that triggers site plan approval. And there will also potentially be situations where I can't, my lot size doesn't, I don't have 5,000 square feet of lot area, so I don't qualify for two families, but I want a detached accessory apartment that's no more than 900 square feet. That would still remain ZBA special permit as opposed to a site plan approval because at 900 square feet, it would still be considered accessory to the main house on the lot. Does that make sense? I mean, it's still sort of a complicated distinction, but I don't know, I don't know if there's another way around it.
But, I mean, to me, part of this is, what are we trying to encourage? I mean, it's better, can I think of the SRR, the out, on the areas? If we think it's better for the accessory apartment to be attached, then the system we have now makes sense. Because one's allowed by right, one requires a special permit, so you're more likely to be attached it. If what we really want to do is allow more and more accessory apartments, because that sort of creates a market rate of affordable units, then in essence flipping that from special permit to site plan approval is appealing.
There's two ways to get an attached accessory apartment. One is for it to be encompassed in the existing shell. And the other way is for it to be nestled up against the...
No, we treat those the same.
That's what I, that was my question.
Yeah, it's only if it's detached, we treat it the same.
That's right, that was my question, okay. Even if you can't see it, because it's nestled entirely within the existing house.
Right, the other, the other issue is even though we might want to encourage detached accessory apartments, the same as we encourage attached ones, let's say we go down that path, right now the zoning board is the body, there's jurisdiction over that review. So if we modify it to site plan, it brings it to planning board, and that of course is a whole nother conversation. I mean, the zoning board pretty regularly grants the requests that come in, and a lot of the times it's because they are in rural areas and nobody really knows they're there anyway. But at the same time, I think the zoning board certainly feels that they have some responsibility to review those things, so we have to have a conversation with the board. You know, so, I mean, that's another issue, it's not that we can't have that conversation, but I just want to make sure that that's out there too.
Well, you opened this up by saying you had gotten a lot of interest from people doing it, so is that what you actually expect? That there will be more requests from people to do accessory apartments or accessory buildings? Or they're coming, trying to figure that out right now?
I think they're trying to figure it out in the in-town areas, yeah, what makes sense and how could they add another unit? And, and a lot of it is because they want to renovate, but they need, you know, they need some, they need to recapture some of that cost. So, you know, we haven't had actual projects, we've just had inquiries.
You think the inquiries have been triggered by the changes in zoning or by the changes in economics?
Zoning, that's interesting.
We don't, yeah, I had a question with accessory apartments, we know a lot of people are looking at, how can they create new lots?
That's interesting.
That's a lot of interest.
And I, you know, there have been a few that have come and wanted to use existing garages and convert them. In many cases, they're too close to the lot line, so that's going to prevent them from doing that. But the cases where they are, they do meet those rear setbacks and side setbacks. I think that may be the preferred, the preferred way, you know, to utilize an existing building. But I hadn't really, I hadn't thought too much about the distinction between the zoning board's, you know, purview over detached structures. And I guess I would say that, in my mind, I think you could rationalize keeping the special permit with zoning board for detached structures, even for the B and C districts, because really the only case where you'd be probably going down that path would be if your lot size is not big enough to support what the zoning now allows as a second principal structure on a parcel. So potentially that in itself is a reason to trigger special permit, because if you're not fitting the criteria and you're sort of asking for special permission to do that even though your lot size doesn't need it.
I just want to refocus, and we started with, about talking to some of the demographic stuff, you know, sort of Northampton's population dropping. Our population is dropping significantly because none of us are having babies. So we actually have a significant inflow of people and probably have more inflow of people than we have in 25 years that have been here, but it's just not keeping up with the fact that people are starting to have babies, so, you know. And so, and what we do know, we still have a pretty low vacancy rate for our renters. So I think it creates more units, maybe counters some of that stuff.
The question of units in which one person lives and then there's a secondary unit so that you're, you have, the renter is on property with the owner of the, of the house. Not having that has been a serious problem in Amherst, obviously, where there's so many students, where houses are going out and being rented and there's no close ownership behaving. Have we had problems like that here?
Certainly, I've had problems. I don't think we have anything like Amherst does in terms of...
That's not been an issue particularly. Do we have a lot of students from Smith that are living in town?
There's some from Smith, but most of the students are on campus. You know, that's why I like UMass.
They have to be on campus for them.
Have to, okay. UMass, we tend to get a lot of graduate students. I'm sure we can have graduates too, but it's not, you know, the bigger number.
You know, I think, I'm not, I'm not really sure, I think with, but they still have to, at whatever point that is, they still have to get approval. Wondered about that.
So then certainly back, is the premise to leave the ZBA process intact and just at B and C, a secondary principal structure needs site plan approval?
I think that's what I heard, I think that makes sense if you guys are, want to... So I would write up the language to tweak the zoning. There's one other thing, I guess, so one other thing you wanted to...
Yeah, big time, the moratorium stuff.
That's right. But, so I was thinking...
That's the only sheet I brought tonight.
Yes. The moratorium thing, so we can add this to the language when we go forward to address the moratorium, if you think we should be going forward to address the moratorium and not just let it run out, then I would attach the site plan thing to that as opposed to bringing it along separately.
The only thing that's back in my mind is why do we have essentially the same kind of thing going toward two different boards, I mean, one board or the other board? Do all the towns or jurisdictions have both the ZBA and the planning board?
Yes, TAL doesn't allow you to merge them together, there'll be some special legislation like Devon's enterprise commission covers both boards and I don't know the same institute of the way in the airport space. Could we talk about it years ago, is it worth going for special legislation to merge them together, some, some benefits? I'm just, I'm not sure we care enough to actually want to go to legislature for it, but I don't disagree, this really makes sense, makes a more good use of grounds.
Okay. Want to talk about the moratorium?
No, she doesn't.
So, my moratorium sheet, oh.
Is it seven or 10?
Well, that's the thing we kept going down to. So right now, the moratorium applies to seven or more units, but the, the special permit threshold... permit threshold applies to 10 or more units. So, so if you remember, one of the things, as the compromises that came through in this, as this made its way through the public hearing process, was to create a special permit threshold for, oh wait a second, now I'm getting confused again. There was two different thresholds.
I thought 10 was only for subdivision regs.
Right, right.
So the moratorium and the special permit are both seven.
Right. So the moratorium, so, so the special permit threshold for B and C districts, so if you're creating more than 10 multifamily in C or townhouse units in B, if you're creating more than seven units, that automatically triggers special permit.
Now, you said 10 and 7 both when you said that, so I'm still confused.
I did? I'm reading the next line. Because then, under, it was special permit at 7, but then there were additional criteria for review starting at 10 units. And so, I guess the idea is, this is too complicated to have the distinctions between 7 and 10.
Yes, it is.
So let's just go back, 7 seemed to be the concern, concerning number, so let's start at 7 and say, special permit starts at 7, but all the special permit criteria apply to 7 and above and don't have an intermediate within that special permit.
Yes.
Okay, so what I was trying to get to, but then I got confused. Which way is another line?
10, 10 right now is only for the subdivision regs, so we're just saying make it all 7.
Make it 7, okay.
Right.
Well, we do need separate first conversation, which we won't catch tonight, we need to amend the subdivision regs anyway, and part of that where you talk about these various, I mean, 7 is a tiny project, so maybe with a separate criteria and subdivision regs for very small projects, but nonetheless, it will get you that criteria stuff.
So current, so what was passed and adopted, but for the moratoriums, was that design, when you hit 10 units or more, the additional design review by the board would include making sure there's compliance with length of streets, the same kind of length of street issue that is restricted in subdivision rules. So there are a couple of features from subdivision regs that were, that would then be applicable to any project that was 10 or more units. So, and I'll talk about that in that list, I think we put that in here. But, the idea is, so once, when, when I brought this back to you, I don't remember when it was, a couple of months ago, and I said, you know, what's, what's happening with, you know, how do we want to go about this? And the idea was really to get more feedback from where three neighborhoods that really raised this issue. What is the, is there anything more that we can do? What's the real issue? So, I think there were two basic points that I took away from my conversation with, actually, I sat down with Bill Dwight and Jim Nash and tried to sort of, you know, hash through this. And, so, there were two concerns. One was the idea of massing, or the breakup of massing, that might be along a sidewall that a butts a residential neighborhood. So if you imagine that you have a lot that's mid-block, that has enough to do 10 or 15 units, let's say, well, okay, let's take Henry Street, that was the deep lot, right, that everybody was concerned about, and all the houses were along the front, and so a lot of the design standards talked about presentation to the front, but we also had some additional buffer requirements for side setbacks. I think Jim also expressed concern that we have design criteria for the sides of buildings where it's, you know, a butts neighbor that may have private yards in the back or something like that, so that we address, so that there's not a long blank wall, or that there are some projection...
Doesn't look like a motel.
Right, that it's not just a box that's set up there. So, there was a concern about addressing those side facades. And then the other piece is the interaction between public and private space, and I don't know that we'll get to all of his concerns, but I think there were some pieces of it that certainly made sense and were, were valid in that, the best way that he described it is, when you create these sort of courtyard developments, as, as an example, or lots that are deep and maybe front on a driveway, that it's not so clear the public is invited down into the property, even though someone may live 10 units down, that it feels like a private enclosed enclave. And how do you create a situation where there's some still essence of public access, even though there's not public right-of-way or easement or anything like that, but, so that we're not creating these, I guess, clusters of private little pockets, of private little subdivisions or developments within the urban context. So, I looked at some ordinances around the country and tried to look at some of those standards and the interface that is, is created or attempted to be created with these new developments that are in, you know, more infill. And we, Wayne and I came up with a list of options to try to address both of those things and maybe come up with a better sense of special permit criteria that would be applicable from 7 on and not have that debate.
Did you talk about the different scales of that, like Fort Hill?
No, I haven't gotten to that point yet. So, so in doing that, we know that there are a couple of projects that we wanted to sort of put on the table and play out these, and why we think some of these are important and how they might play out, so, I don't know if you want to do that.
Yeah.
Did you bring, Pomeroy, is that on there?
No, I just brought it, Fort Hill.
So, actually, I don't know if we had any thing other than on the map, maybe if you flip this over. Well, let's take the Shaw's Motel site as sort of an example. So this isn't blown up too well, let me come up here. So, this is Route 9, and then here's Pomeroy Terrace, and this is the corner here, these two lots is, are where Shaw's. So there are actually two parcels and there are three buildings, right?
Three buildings, three times the acre.
Including the hotel.
It's not quite an acre.
Probably ten.
So, one of the things, so, so we ran through this and we actually sat down with, there've been, not too many, but a few calls from prospective buyers of that site. And we sat down and run some different layout scenarios and how it would fit within the current zoning. And I think one of the things that, one of the things we liked about, one of the designs we saw was townhouse units wrapping the corner of Bridge and Pomeroy. And it wasn't multifamily per se, I mean, it wasn't one unit on top of the other, but I felt like that was a really good example of, that I thought would fit in with the neighborhood because it's not creating parking on the street, it's got, I mean, that is a busy street, but it also could, and it's obviously an important corner when you're, you're coming around that corner into downtown. So, filling up that void with, with units that are, sort of wrap that corner, I think made sense.
With the front, with the front out.
Right, and the parking in the back, so you'd access it, there was a one driveway entrance off of Pomeroy Terrace into the back, and then garage entrances that would sort of go under those units partially. And then there was one unit reserved in the back corner of the lot. So, sort of, we took that as sort of a, a play space, if you will, to figure out what made sense in that and maybe what needed to be tweaked to make that even a better project, so...
And what bad thing could someone do?
Yeah. Right, so, I'll turn this back over and draw. So if we have Bridge here...
Do you want to bring that back?
What's that?
Do you want to put fresh paper?
Sure. We'll have other projects.
And a marker, Wayne.
What about the driveway raceboard? Use that one right there. They're mine, Wayne. So, yeah, we'll get filled if we, I don't think there are any smart, or there may be some markers over there, but I don't want to get in trouble.
Yeah, so do not.
So if we have, so if we have, oh great, Bridge here, and Pomeroy comes around here, and then that goes off up here, so there's sort of whole corner here, and the driveway access will sort of push back here, and if you have the front loaded unit here, going out this way with the front porch and everything, and then there was this back unit here. So the idea was, you know, how do you, one of the, one of the issues would be, you know, this is all great, I think, and this fits in within the design character, this would be 12 units, so...
That was from here.
What's that? Oh, did I, did I sign it correct? Was there a break here?
Yeah, there's a break there.
And then another building here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the driveway was here, another building here, and then a building back here. So the driveway came in here and there were garage entrances like that.
You wanted to have a garage and a room behind the garage to park your second car if you had it.
And this is all parking here, something like that. So, this is driveway. So, I guess the idea is, how do we, you know, how do you get pedestrians safely in here to go to this unit? How does that feel like anybody from the public can go and visit their friend here? How does this person reach Bridge Road? Or, you know, if you're coming from town and you want to get to this unit?
And what's behind it this way here?
This is a big house, and then the condo, there's a doctor's office, or some, a dentist's office somewhere here. I think there's still one other unit here, dentist, and then back here is that condo.
And in Pomeroy, it's just big homes, I think.
Yeah, these are homes, and then on this side. And then this is nonprofit or multifamily, something or other. So, I'm sorry, this looks terrible. But the, so, I guess, so some of these points are, you know, making sure that you have direct pedestrian access to the street, and then also safe access to any parking. Obviously, parking in the rear is sort of always what, you know, we've been pushing for and what we want, we don't want that facing the street. So, I think, we think that was a good example, but there were still some tweaking that probably would make it better, and why not have the language in the ordinance so the board is, has clear jurisdiction to say, you didn't provide this, you have to do this or else we can't approve your permit? So I think, I don't know if Wayne, you want to, what points on there that we added to that, I think there were...
For this?
Yeah, we broke down.
We're talking about, let's keep doing context for this and come back to us and stuff.
Yeah.
So, so Fort Hill, the Lyman estate, the Smith College has been itself at some point? This, this is probably one of the, this is a project of this size in the area, but it's a very real project, exactly the same issues come up for that. So we were sort of playing with, you know, what are the issues that come up with Fort Hill? We do have a senior, have a neighborhood meeting on Monday, February 3rd, 5:30, that you're certainly all welcome to come to. But it's, it's going to be some of the same issues, and it says, in that case, it's about Fort Hill, because we're thinking about what are the unifying principles that may be in fact represented in the special permit grant area? So, you know, it's a similar thing, you know, Karen was talking about, this is just sort of really just, you know, trace paper and playing quickly, but, you know, I think some people in the neighborhood like this to be isolated, I think, we generally think everything should be connected and connect the grid, and that it shouldn't be sort of a separate gated community.
South Street.
Yeah, sorry. South Street, Lyman, the curbs around, there's a townhouse project here in Old Verso, but this neighborhood is primarily single, two-family, and I guess some three-towerhouses.
Excellent.
And so, you know, ignore the detail of this, just sort of thinking about, you know, how do we have a connection so that it's not a dead-end street? The not a connection becomes a big cut through. How do we have, and this may not work in some, because no one's going to build a loop road unless they can do homes here, 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 and here, it may not be thick enough, but sort of taking, you know, our rule for subdivisions is we don't allow dead-end streets more than 500 feet. So saying, well, how do you have, you know, the road would have to loop, you couldn't have more than 500 feet, so the developer might want to loop back over here. And then, idea for the neighborhood that it applies elsewhere is, very thin, you know, lots that aren't very deep, sort of match the neighborhood, where the final product we're going to do for the neighborhood is we're literally cutting and pasting whole blocks over here and moving them here and showing how they work. And whether there's single-family homes or townhouses or row houses, I don't really care, because that still has a development along the street, as opposed to being a parking complex that has a different feeling. So then, thinking about some of those lessons as well on this, on this list, it wouldn't just be for Fort Hill, you know, likewise, think about somewhere near, there should be some parkland. That may not matter for a seven-unit project, or it might matter for a 16-unit project.
This is, what, 14 acres?
I don't know, this sounds like actually, I don't know.
I've heard 14.
It's unsustainable because a lot of it's plugged in, nothing's going to happen over here, or practically not much might happen over here.
Is the dike part of the land itself?
It wraps around the dike.
Okay.
So, this is the old carriage house or whatever, there's a brick thing, and this is where Leonard Basken used to live?
That's where Leonard Basken, yes, and that's the Yonkers State, so, and that's the metal building that's the, you know, reasonable.
And then this is the path that goes down, past Ken's house.
Do you foresee the, you, you've acted like there would be access through what is senior or, you know, student housing or whatever, Smith, you know, 1950s?
I don't think there's much value in those, but...
I don't either, but it might, it, it, access through there is needed in order to make the transportation system work in that area.
Right, right. So that's why we've assumed sort of two loop roads in here. And we play with the road actually frankly coming in this way, you know, if you came in this way, because we're, you know, it's good not to be dead ends, but you wouldn't want it to be a cut through. So the scenario we play with is, this actually may be the road, but not connecting here, if a road came here and looped around, then you'd never...
It's pretty steep.
You're not going to cut through, right, it's pretty steep, right.
Would you sort of use these as templates, just to try to figure out what are concepts that make sense, that should be put into the zoning, that we want to make sure everyone's thinking about ahead of time?
Well, and I haven't heard of the rule before, we don't like streets, dead-end streets that are more than 500 feet, I mean, there are...
So, so that's already a rule in the subdivision regs, which applies if this is over 10 units, but it's not necessarily a rule for apartment complexes with a dead-end street. So that's the sort of thing of how do we take that out? And 500 feet, which for, as you're urban, in a, in a big city, blocks of 250 feet to 300 feet. So it's not that we're particularly strange, it's still a longer life, it would be maybe a, I would say 250 to 350. What's that?
Anybody? Here's the plan, oh, I said the, 300 is not a very long block.
No, but in urban context, it is. I mean, you know, New York is 250 feet by 500 feet, is what we have, but lots of cities who specify say 250 feet or 300 feet, all those types of things. So, to, to, then, this work of these one-by-one type of, you know, obviously we had, but, you know, so this, the first one is what Karen said, all these criteria would be 7 units, 7 for some and 10 for some, it is a special permit. When do you do number two, because that's yours, I think?
Right, so it's sort of the example we're showing, the first row of buildings along a street shall face the street and add to the street scape to the extent possible, and no parking between that, the building and the, and the street, except as a driveway access.
Well, and that old housing I was talking about is exactly, I mean, it's ugly anyway, but it is exactly that, the backs face the street, the cars park on the street, and they face into a courtyard that no one's...
And what we're trying to do, just generally before we go through this, I should have said this in the beginning, is, we're doing site plan approval, because you said you have to approve site plan projects. Are we doing things by right? We need things that are very measured, to tell people exactly what the rules are. One of the special permits, I fear, would too far go the other direction of, fits the character of the neighborhood, it doesn't really give anyone feedback and not sign one's defense. So we're looking for something that's halfway between those things, that still gives you and developer fair amount of discretion, because each of these sites are different, but it means more than fits the character of the neighborhood that's out there.
So, just moving along, any project shall meet the connectivity requirements, including making the street scape between the property and the road pavement, pedestrian-friendly, and fully in accordance with city best practices, including granite curbs, concrete sidewalks, tree built, and when possible, rain gardens and appropriate drainage improvements.
So this is partially, you know, we talk about form-based code, or we don't have any form-based code, but one of the form-based codes typically is you code not only the private ground, what the public, what the developer does, but the public ground with the street scape as well. And we just want to say, between your project and the street, you own that, we don't want to set standard, but you own that, we expect you to, and it's pragmatic that you guys always do this as conditions, and people always complain about those conditions, but if a sidewalk's in bad shape, fix it, the trees are in bad shape, fix them, if we want rain gardens, you know, these should be modeled. The good thing with these projects is, these aren't incredibly expensive because they're not using up a lot of street furniture, but they need to bring themselves up to it.
So then, sub, point A... So then, sub-point A is sort of what we talked about in the context of this property, the Lyman Estate, is that projects should connect to surrounding neighborhoods with either bicycle and pedestrian access and/or driveways and roadways, or, you know, in addition to driveways and roadways, connecting to each other internally, but also externally connecting to the neighborhood. So to continue that fabric of the neighborhood.
And this isn't to be anti-apartments, and say we don't want big blocks, but this sort of saying, you know, the street, everything should be developed along the street, whether it's a public street or a private, it should look and feel the same. Part of going back to the subdivision regs, where we want, so if this stuff is adding cost to developers, partly going to the subdivision regs, we want to talk about is, right now, we expect streets to be 22 feet wide with granite curbs and concrete sidewalks.
On both sides?
On both sides. And we're talking about, what you could really do, we talked about shared streets before, if you could really do a street which is maybe only 20 feet wide and really stop them cars from going faster than 15 miles an hour, I mean, we don't need separate sidewalks. We do those ways to save developers money in that direction.
Is this kind of street to be accepted by the city as a street?
So this would be neutral to that. The answer is probably not, most projects, Lyman Estate, probably yes, but probably not anywhere else in Ward B, I just don't think we'd be any of the sites that sucks.
But that's also relevant to changing the subdivision regulations, because right now, subdivision regulations don't allow for that sort of urban, more urban-type street, or infill street, where you might have less pavement, or narrower pavement, or shared street. I think DPW is much more, well, I know they're much more leery of accepting anything that's outside of the regulation, so which just points to the fact that we really need to work on changing the regulations with their input and their blessing. So that if there were a situation like this to come forward, that might have a shared street, that it potentially could become public, if it made sense, because it was connecting to the street grid and was just expanding that.
Because on the one hand, you want it to look and feel and be public, on the other hand, it's not public, and that's what I was trying to get at.
Well, you do think, regardless of anything else, because you want to look and feel at public, that includes public access, public easement. So whoever maintains it isn't the same, none of these things should be gated, they should be, the public should be welcomed to wander through and walk their dogs.
Yeah. But you, but you are saying granite curbing and, and, when do you decide things have to have granite curbing, and...
If it's going to be curbing, I think is the, if you could really do, avoid, do low-impact development and not do curbing, we don't want asphalt that falls apart in three months, it doesn't really help.
Well, I can't help but think about Bear Hill, where it's new, and there is, and I just, and that really looks like a street. I mean, that doesn't look like, is this a street, or should I, or shouldn't I not go up that street? It looks like a street and it doesn't have it. That's, so I was trying to, I was trying to decide what the image was and where the criteria held.
Well, and we don't, actually, it's probably right after Bear Hill is approved, that we put in the subdivision, we put in the site plan approval criteria, that you had to match for materials what you're having in the street. So, bituminous is allowed.
Okay.
And some of the things will come up for developer is, like, if it's a public street, they have to make sure there's room for people to park off the street for snowplow. And maybe some of these sites are small enough for developers, you know, if every house only is 50 feet of frontage, the cost a homeowner is paying to plow the street isn't that much in a, you know, spread out over the project. And literally, you know, not being able to park in the street, eats up a lot of real estate. So maybe some developers don't even want the land taken up.
So when do you think you might look at subdivision rules for 22 to 20?
Was it our plan for two months ago?
Because I actually all four down.
And one of the things that we talked to, actually with councillor, previous councillor, Owen Freeman Daniels, was that we would look at, looking at sort of those orders that we were in the regulations.
I mean, kind of especially with DPW, the balls in our court, not theirs, we have to write these, but at least they, they sort of know what's coming and, you know, and have agreed to review it, and so, so...
Did anybody suggest co-housing from that area, in the area of...
It certainly could work there. Again, we were looking at this more as principles that we learned for the regulations, as opposed to what we actually looking for, that's a separate discussion, it's, you know...
But none of this would preclude...
No, absolutely not. Right. I just want to think, what would a good developer do to make sure we're allowing it? What would a bad developer do to make sure we're stopping it? And then ultimately, that's going to be whoever sells the property, who's going to decide at that, at that level.
So the next point, driveways and roadways shall either have separate sidewalks, or be designed as a shared street, focus on pedestrians and bicyclists, and engineer to keep speeds below 15 miles per hour. So if you were to have a sort of limited scope at a small lot like, you know, the Shaws Motel site, and you have a driveway in there, you want to make sure that it's safe enough for, you know, people to be walking back and forth, that's an urban area, you want people to be walking downtown, that kind of thing.
And this way, this...
When you say shared street in that sense, you don't mean like I'm thinking about the, you know, co-mingling of bicycles and pedestrians?
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
And that's why the 15 miles an hour is so important, is it, we're basically telling the developer, you want to do a simple asphalt street, fine, give us granite curbs and sidewalks, and that's $150 a foot. Spend the extra money in the road, which might be curves, it might be allowed on parking, there might be change in materials, lots of things that add a lot of money, but in the long term, they're still saving money by dropping those, those curbs and sidewalks.
What are you going to tell a developer to do to a street for the pedestrian walking in it, if it's not sidewalks?
So a bunch of different approaches places have, and I think that's the choices we want to spend time on, but some of these people have, say, a six-foot wide granite, I mean, a six-foot wide concrete part of the street. It looks and feels like a sidewalk, much thicker so the cars won't destroy it, and you have literally cobblestone, I don't know if that's too expensive, but brick payers that build the street out to 20 feet. So the cars can drive, but there's a clear message that people are walking here. There's a design which we liked, I keep having pride, wouldn't, of using parked cars sort of as a chican. So parked cars on the side of the street for 65 feet, and the other side of the street back and forth. So, you know, there's a bunch of different methods to do them, and the biggest challenge for every single one of them is that snowplowing water.
And then number five, actually also came out of the conversation with Ward Three, and I think we, you all probably heard it a lot through, you know, the loss of open space. So it's really that all projects shall include a park or civic space that is easily accessible, available, desirable for the residents of the project. So seven units is a small project, and maybe it's just a little pocket area that functions for those people. It's not talking about creating public parks, it's really about making sure that there's some little oasis within the project. And, and so, you might still, you know, instead of saying you have whatever the 20% or 40% open space is, it can't just be a grass strip around the perimeter of the project and that, oh, great, that adds up to my 40%, I'm done. But when you're building more units, you need to have some functional space, because it provides relief in the neighborhood, even if it's just visual, but also for the people living here.
And we're aside, it's true, that not only is it quality, but these could be really tiny spaces, we're not talking about anything big.
I can understand how we could look at something and decide whether it was accessible and available, but I'm not quite sure how you quantify desirable.
Well, even when that, I'm thinking about, on Hospital Hill, where, you know, that you finally take a lot that can't get developed and you make it a park, and that's where the fountain is. I mean, I think we're going to, if, if what you're after here is what we are thinking about, I think it's going to have to be more concrete. I mean, we're going to have to figure out a way to say that. Maybe it's a proportion of the area of, you know, if you're developing 14 acres, it's some proportion. If you're developing two acres, it's different?
I mean, maybe the size of property is the threshold for the one. I'd be really cautious about the size of acreage. We use, use this one as an example. They could get lots of acreage down here. And maybe what we want, instead of desirable, is that it's a primary focal point, that the average person...
Something tangible is missing from that at the moment.
Yeah.
Who's going to maintain the space?
The owners. I mean, if you're private, unless they're creating a park that they want to say, hey, this is a great civic space, we'll dedicate it to the city, that's another question. But this isn't meant to say, to create an exemption, say, every development has to give the city public space. So it probably, in most cases, would be a private, private ownership. But, you know, you can have a little playground, you know, or many, a swing set, or something with benches, or a fountain.
It's a dedicated spot, right?
Yeah. That doesn't have to be big, but it's, it's been thought out, and it's not just a leftover piece of grass strip.
So it could be 1,000 or 2,000 square feet?
Yeah.
The example I gave before they took it over is, the granite steps in front of shop, was now shop therapy, before they put all their stuffed block in, that used to be the most heavily used spot in town. There'd be more people there than a classy park. You know, and that was 20 square feet or something.
All the old shop there.
Yeah. Yeah, right?
That flashy one.
With the steps.
Yeah. He's shown the video, I think.
Okay, so, and this, with number six, is sort of what I think I started out with, generally align front facades with those facades on either side, I'm sorry, this is still the street, on either side of those projects. So it's just an infill, literally, between two other existing houses. Make sure the plane of that new building is consistent with the abutting two parcels.
That's seven, you skipped six.
I did.
At least everything I...
Oh, right, so, okay.
And I didn't understand six, so...
So building project, so this is what I meant, I did start, sorry, I'm skipping all over.
And we're all at sixes and sevens here.
So six. So this is going back to that side facade issue, and if you have a long wall that's going, you know, deep into a project that abuts an existing neighbor, that long, you have to consider in terms of additional design elements that break up that mass thing or create some kind of offsets.
I think it needs to be a sentence, because it doesn't make any sense.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
Put it in shallow clue somewhere.
Somewhere along the line, it needs to be a sentence, okay?
Yeah, okay, got it. I was so quick to run all that.
Yeah, you knew.
Well, see, that's the problem, I should think about this stuff.
Right.
Okay. So, does it make sense, though, that one facade referring to?
It's probably broken up.
Okay. And then, so seven, I started to talk about, but thus, front facades have to align with the abutting front facade, and that other setbacks may be appropriate, depending on the context and structure it's located in, so...
So this is, you can imagine, generally in home, in nice mature neighborhoods, when homes line up, you want the gap, they empty a lot to line up. But we have some bad neighborhoods in town. We have neighborhoods with this junky stuff there, and we don't want to pretend we're frozen forever, so that's the special permit criteria to give you the flexibility.
Well, and you'll have, along this project, you'll have no street scape, so are you wanting to say, looks like across the street, would that...
That's what I like, yeah.
Now, if they had a garage that was setback from the house, this wouldn't prevent that from happening.
Right.
Even though it is a front facade, in a way.
Right, general align. And then, so the item is not numbered, it's just other food for thought, that options, should we be including options or incentives for affordable housing?
So the challenge here is, I love all the zoning that City Council just passed, but in essence, what we did is, we said we want this dense, we want to be a dense town, so we're giving this away. What then is that we can't do what some towns do? Some towns have a zone that's less than they really are happy to take, and then they give that extra density in return for affordable housing. We've already done that, so we don't really have a lot to offer. So the thing we were playing with is, well, what we could offer is going for a special permit to site plan approval.
One of the things, though, is that it would appear that we've created an opportunity for a lot of smaller auxiliary kinds of spaces, which ought to, I mean, maybe not affordable housing in some technical sense of the word, but that ought to be bringing some more modest housing into the community.
Yeah.
After, after watching the hill get developed, and, you know, there was so much sort of talk about workforce housing up there, and then, you know, 450 for new construction, you know, isn't, I mean, I think it has to get more structure to it, if you really do think you're going to get workforce housing.
450? In the last bungalow, 580 or something?
580, I saw that one in the...
580? For the bungalow, yeah. Portable to somebody.
Well, you know, and I think that a lot of this infill, you know, infill already is sort of on the path to creating potential for more affordability, because there aren't the upfront infrastructure costs like we have at the state hospital. But it's still, I guess the question that we were grappling with is, do we need another, it may be more about sort of the lower end of that affordability range, and potentially even subsidize affordability? So does that make sense?
Is there a category of senior housing? I mean, I'm asked rather naively, I mean...
You can't do it, Mestres specifically says, you can't do age discrimination, except for housing 55 and above. And someone's had done that, East Hampton did that for a while, they made it easier, and then they were getting a lot of products, and decided to stop doing that or to do less. But you can't necessarily get more state money. Our state doesn't want to do a lot of restrictions. So in terms of that market rate affordable, yes. In terms of tax credit stuff, Mestres doesn't love that. Because everybody likes older people, they don't like poor people, it's the reality.
In this business about incentives for affordable housing, when we're essentially talking, and I don't know what the amount of land is in this, but in a lot of the other stuff we've been talking about, we're talking about very small pieces of property.
Right.
So you're not going to get, when you say incentives, it's not going to be extra housing in there, so what is it going to be?
Well, that's what I'm saying, the only thing we can think about is making it a site plan approval instead of a special permit. Special permit scares people. Not only going through the planning board, but the appeals that could happen from the neighborhood.
So if I, yeah, so if I were to use seven units, I know that's a special permit, but if I do one of the units as an affordable unit, and then I know I can just go through site plan, that may be an incentive to have someone offer one of those units as an affordable unit, as part of a project. But you're right, it's very small and tough to potentially dump the numbers at that small scale.
If, if all these other stuff is really important, to have all these restrictions and things on it, that seems like a, that's a hard trade-off to make, to say, it's really important to do the, all this approval with all these criteria, but if you put one other thing in here, we can pull a lot of that away. That's hard. I mean, the affordable housing is important, but that's kind of an interesting...
Well, I guess the question is, couldn't you do those same things by site plan approval? Because again, you have the right to do conditions for site plan. I mean, if it's, you can't say, no, you couldn't do the projects for the site plan approval. Special permit, you could say, you didn't do it, you can satisfy us returning it down. Site plan approval says, you got to approve it, but you could still condition, say, you have to have articulation with building facade, and you're dead-end street, can't be more than 500 feet, all those sorts of things, you could require those.
I guess, I mean, the language that we're trying to get is specific enough that it's, it's enforceable in a site plan.
Right.
It's hard to view.
Definitely hard to do it that way, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the...
Yeah.
Well, I think you're right, there'd be probably a lot of question through the process about the rationale for just sort of, as you suggested, throwing all that stuff out, or throwing the special permit out, just to get one or two, you know, affordable units, I think. You know, that would need to be explained pretty clearly, I think, for counselors and for constituents to understand why you would do that, but...
Well, you could also just say, you have to do, ten percent units have to be affordable. I think the problem is, we see a lot of developers who're unstable with thresholds, and, you know, who won't get projects.
And the other question is, do we need an incentive for affordable housing, or is allowing this additional density enough at this point to say, well, we might not get subsidized affordability, but we'll get more market rate affordable units, just because we're allowing some more units here and there within the existing framework? we're allowing some more units here and there within the existing framework?
I think that argument has more teeth than the bungalow argument, that was, well, they're not going to be a certain price point, but they're, just the footprint is subs, a small size, that by default, they're going to be affordable, when they ultimately, more adults want, but I think we get more affordable housing out of these small little pocket developments than you would.
Yeah, I think as long as our rental market is as tight as it is, that more rental is helpful. I mean, in other words, I'd make that, I'm with you, I'm making that argument, that, because if we're talking about new construction, that's the conundrum you're in, it's not going to be affordable and real expensive to do.
Well, I think some people are going to have to learn a new definition for affordable, too.
Right. I just think it would be hard to mandate, I don't think you could say 10%, it has to be affordable, whatever the threshold is, because then I think the development just wouldn't happen, and then, and then what the trigger would be, what the number of units would be to ask for that, I would be of the mind to not ask for it at all.
What's the current affordable, affordable?
11.3?
Hmm? 11.3%. Okay, if it falls before 10, below 10%, then developers can come in and do pretty much anything they want.
Well, it's an easier process, you know, if this project happens to a hospital, that's 83 assisted delivery services, of which 40, 43 are affordable, that would make a big, that would buy us a couple of years of affordability.
But it's, I mean, it's reasonable, if, we can keep even if we require 10% affordability.
Well, in theory, but we might get projects that are below that threshold.
Or like single houses, too.
But it is true that, I mean, the more, we've got, you know, zoning has encouraged a lot of accessory apartments, those are the market rate affordable, it's probably the biggest place where zoning's been successful, but more the affordable units, the more just the other efforts. I mean, you know, there's a lot of developers out there, half is out there looking for future sites or tax credit projects, so it may be that the very fact that we're allowing more units is going to create affordable units, because of people like half of Valley City City, who will buy an acre of land and put in 16 units around there, so that makes more allowance. This, and this is how we, you know, each time we think we're going to lose it, another big project, state hospital created a bunch of universities, so.
Yeah, I mean, Ice Pond is, is a pretty upscale development, that has four affordable units of it, and you can tell what they are, because they only have single car garages.
So leave it as is?
I would say, let's handle it.
Are there, we've been tweeting the language we have here, which is great, are there whole major things we're missing that you could think about?
That requires a whole different.
Yeah, and you're getting a lot of, this isn't your last chance to get that.
So do you need anything from us relative to this tonight, or no?
No. We can do it, you know, more versions coming back. I mean, what I want to do, I don't, I don't want all this clock tick out, so I want to make sure we get something to council, so it's an effect.
Yeah.
And is there going to be a lot of re-educating, you've got a new council?
Yeah, there's some, yeah.
Some of those councillors were participated in the council, so hopefully won't be started from here.
And part, you know, and part of the reason we're starting a discussion about this project is partially because the neighbors really worried it goes on here, but partially, frankly, it's another way to give us feedback, is, as we think through this, we may come out and think that.
So I had one other thing, two other, I guess, minutes, and then this Cook Avenue Street Substance, which came in just recently, actually, so you know, the whole series of street substance requests, and this piece is Cook Avenue from Hatfield Street intersection, so right by that Walmart back intersection, up to a point just past the Pine's Edge driveway, so not quite to the, basically to the edge of the gravel drive lot that goes to the Moose Lodge, and BPW voted to recommend approval for that section, so believe it or not, that's not a public street. It's one of those leftover segments, so putting that there for discussion for you guys, and then once you guys take a vote, we'll move it.
We're talking about the road, that is a road that stops and turns to gravel by the Moose Lodge, but before it starts, yeah. That's a road.
It's a road.
Yeah, it's a road.
Sounds like everybody thought it was a road.
Recommend Cook Avenue to the council as a road for acceptance.
Second. All in favor?
Okay.
And the minutes we have are of December, what? You're right on top of it, New Year's Day.
So there's a couple, there was one edit that Ari made, that Devin, I didn't have a full second, so I just pulled that out.
Okay.
Okay.
So Devin's second, all in favor?
All right, who made the motion, Ian?
Ian, yeah.
All right, awesome.
Can't go to the brewery now, they're close to two months.
Isn't that a wrong?